So a few items to circle back to, to see if we can start looking into information. We'd already talked a little bit about the music program, whether it's at the high school level or the middle school level. So I think the administration has an idea of what we're looking for there. The last comment, oh, I'm sorry, the second to last, third to last comment, because the anonymous one. There was two or three staff members being recognized for their achievements at McCullough Unis, I think it is. Can we make sure that they get, they get a copy of that? Nurses. I remember when I first came into the district, I think we, I felt like we only had like two or three nurses. And it just seemed inadequate. So I'm happy with the number, happy that the number has increased. Have we considered anything additional for nursing? Do we, do we have additional needs there? How do we compare to other districts in surrounding, in the surrounding area? Just let us know about that one, Dr. Maleko. Trustee McDonald.
President Thorpe, the comment.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, go on, Trustee Moszep.
I was just gonna say that the comment was also mentioning nurses aides as well.
Yes. Thank you.
Perhaps we should also put that in their, a copy of that in their folders as well, just to, in the teachers' folders. But what I had wanted to mention was the comments that were made about the bathroom. I'm assuming, like she said, there isn't consistency across the district. But I don't know if there's a policy, if we need, we need to get some kind of consistency. If it is just up to the discretion of the teachers, especially for girls in high school, I think that is an important point. So if we can get some information or figure out a way to have a policy geared towards that specifically.
And to make sure people know what the policy is, the students and the parents. Okay. Trustee Watts.
Well, I had spoken to some of the students at the Dearborn, at one of the Dearborn High Games, and they had mentioned the bathrooms. That as young women, they did not have access to the bathrooms. So I think that it's, it's that age group, we need to make sure that they have access when, without making a, drawing attention to themselves.
Absolutely.
And that also feeds back to something Dr. Maleko said earlier about these different challenges. And one of the challenges was to go vandalize a bathroom. So we want the bathrooms to be there when the students need it, but we also don't want any damage to happen to any of our properties. So students, the better you treat the bathrooms, the more open they can be. Trustee Pat Litschkov.
Well, and I, and I would hope we have at all three of our high schools, female principals. And I'm hoping that there's some good communication occurring between parents about these concerns. As well as instead of just coming, bringing it to the board, we're not in every building. We don't know what their policies are. Each principal is given the charge of managing their, their building. And I'm hoping that the principals are reaching out to the parents and students. And the parents and students are reaching back to the administration in the building in order to have some good communication about their needs and, and how they can come to some kind of good compromise of building policies. So they can't be just coming to us and complaining. They really need to have, form that relationship within the building.
Agreed. Also add to that though, just the availability of the supplies needed if they're, you know, if there's some available in each building or where they might be kept.
Thanks. Trustee Barry.
The only comment I can come up with is I'm shocked it's even an issue. I mean, you get a mob come up here, speak to us, that's very painful. So yeah, definitely agree. I mean, parents, yeah, reach out to your administrators. If there is a teacher out there, I can't even imagine, if there's a teacher, I mean, that's a form of bullying. Please, if you don't get results from your principal, from your administrator, reach out to the administration. That's the only thing I can think of. I mean, I, again, I'm shocked it's even an issue, but. Thank you.
There was a few different comments about employee retention and also staff recognition since the last board meeting. And not much has been done. Well, let's also remember that it's been four weeks and, and we can't change everything in four weeks. I can only speak for myself to tell you that I heard loud and clear what was being said. And I've had many conversations with Dr. Maleko. And I've talked with other building administrators and just trying to gather feedback. But it takes a little time to gather feedback and not everyone, of course, is looking for the same thing. But it can come back to some simple things like recognition, civility. Just remind people that they're doing a good job. Let them know that you appreciate them. We've all gone through a very traumatic experience with COVID. We all need to, to remind ourselves to, to treat each other nicely. You'll, I mean, it can start as simple as if the bus is running a couple of minutes late for something not the bus driver's fault. And if a parent starts yelling at the bus driver, then the day just keeps snowballing. We've all been in that type of situation. So when you get a chance, thank somebody for what they're doing. But I can personally tell you, I heard you, it's just gonna take a little bit of time for us to really come up with some different things. I don't know if there's any additional comments about employees. Trustee Moszep.
Thank you, President Thorpe. I've already talked to Dr. Maleko in our one-on-one meeting and extensively about this. And you're right, it takes time to look at the many things that we need to do for our staff. I've went publicly on the record and asked for as many virtual PDs as possible from the administration as a gesture to value our employees and meet them where they are. I, we, I do believe that they have obviously busy lives besides their professional life. And to, to have them report to a building for a professional development, for example, when they can actually attend from home is, is better for everybody. And I think, you know, we need to think outside the box of other things that we need to appreciate staff with. Other districts are, are actually giving teachers some days off as far as, for the entire schools. I know Ypsilanti Public School District just gave the day before Thanksgiving off. So things like that, that lessen the pressure on them. All of the administrative work that I've talked to Dr. Maleko about, of, of things to take away from the teachers' plates or the staff's plates, where it gives them more time to, to breathe and, and to have, also, we always talk about mental health. And we have to watch for also their mental health and to avoid burnout. And to do that, you have to give them time to refresh and, and, and come back to, to be there for our students. So I truly appreciate Dr. Maleko and his team of coming up with ideas and also soliciting feedback from staff about what they would like to have. And I know something about the teacher advisory was mentioned. And obviously the administration is looking into it, but we would like everybody to also have a voice. And thank you.
Trustee Watts.
So I think as we hear the teachers always asking the children and asking themselves, what do I need to make this child successful? Or what does this child need to be, to feel successful or to be successful? And I think that phrase there is, is valuable because we need to be asking our teachers too, what do you need to feel successful? And many times it's, it's not a large gesture. It's just the idea of knowing that you're not alone with 60 children in a room because it's isolating. And again, it's just, we need to ask them, what do you need to feel successful? Not just the teachers, but the support staff from the office all the way down and all the way up too. So it's not just the teachers, it's the principals, because I know the principals are exhausted too. And it goes back to just reminding ourselves what we need to feel whole. Sometimes just somebody asking us that simple question. And I can go on and on, but I think that's just, that's the message that we need to be asking each other is what do you need? Like you were saying earlier, when they're presenting the blue ribbon, what do you need? He said, leave me alone. But you asked him that and that stuck with him. And look at how successful he is. So, thank you.
Trustee Pelichkov.
I also just wanted to comment on the fact that one of the comments talked about unfair hiring practices. And that's really a mischaracterization of what's going on here because we do work with the unions. We have contracts, we have letters of agreements. And I don't want people to get the impression that we're doing something nefarious with our hiring practices. These are agreements that we have reached with the union. And the reason why it takes so long to shift again when we're looking for compensation packages and other opportunities to find ways to compensate our staff is that we then once again have to go back to the table with our unions. And that is time consuming. And there is a, a bit of a dance that is done in order to find that balance for the district. And if anyone has some concerns, they need to reach out to their union representatives and ask and, and share with them as well what it is that they are really looking for. So that they have a clear understanding of what's being reflected to us during the negotiations and that we are finding that right fit for what their issues are. But we're not doing this in a vacuum here. It's just not us sitting around a table and deciding how we're hiring and what we're doing with the hires. We are working with all of our unions in order to represent our hiring practices. And I just want to make sure it's not mischaracterized and it's an unfair labor practice that we're doing.
Yeah, and I'm glad you brought that one up, that we can have these ideas, but we're always going to go back to the collective bargaining units to make sure that they're comfortable with everything. And then we also know that the members are reaching out to their union representatives directly. It's never going to be solved, we should all know that one. But we all need to keep working towards something that we are all comfortable with. And again, we want to make sure that all the staff know that they are appreciated here in the district. Trust, I'm sorry. Dr. Maleko.
So just so everyone's aware, and I know I've talked to President Thorpe and others, we, we continue to have this on our cabinet agenda for dialogue. We're also restructuring some staff retention and recruitment as well. We're looking at a survey potentially through Ms. Farage to kind of get some of that feedback. We were thinking of doing it during the lunch, but we decided, no, we're just gonna make it laid back. And we want it to be just positive, so we didn't want to do the survey. We discussed that and we said, we said, you know what, we're gonna let staff nominate other staff. It's a PLC philosophy, the do fours. I used to do this at Salina, but it was actually our, our new guy over here, Adam Martin, helped with that idea. But it was a whole teamwork with Mason and the others. What better way than to recognize staff? And we'll, we'll have a drawing for the gift cards. It's something I think staff that have helped each other, or they see staff members helping students, I think is really positive. We are exploring and I continue to talk to Jane, we talked on Friday, we had some ideas. We'll, we'll still be talking, we're meeting on Wednesday, I think. And there were some ideas that was suggested, you know, about different things that we may look at to relieve stress or daze or whatever. I will say the one thing we did investigate, and I know other districts may have other days built in. We are solid at 180, so as far as student days go, we are at the, we can't, we would have to make up a student day. Now, there might be other ways to get around that, but I just want to make that known. I know they, other districts may have had emergencies or others, and they may have scheduled other days. We checked with A B Sure and we're right at the 180. So as far as the student days goes, we're required. Now, I have also talked and talked to, excuse me, talked to, different associations are asking and promoting for maybe the state. And they've asked me to advocate through my associations to have more flexibility with that at the legislative level. I don't know if that will change or not, but they talked about flexibility of days. So we're in a different time because of COVID. So right now under the law, where we need to be, we don't have much flexibility, but we're still talking. And we're gonna talk to the union, you know, about different things that we can do as well, along with our cabinet. Thank you.
So with you bringing up the, the 180 days, which is the minimum that we're allowed to do. I know there's also instructional time. How much time we've got to have?
1,098 hours.
Is there any possibility where you could, well, I'll talk to you about it offline.
Okay.
But there, just keep every possibility out there to help them out. All right, next item, please.
Okay, give me a second here, all right. So next item is action items. Are there any agenda items on this, on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude these from the motion below.
We will need to pull item number five, just so we can explain it to everybody.
I was gonna ask, yeah, I have a question on five.
Any other items? Trustee Watts.
I have a question about number three.
Do you need it pulled or you just want to make sure to, to address the one question?
Uh, I just was gonna ask the one question.
Okay. Any other item that we would need to pull? Any other action items that we would have questions on? Seeing none, Trustee Moszep, if you could go ahead and state the, the recommendation?
Sure. Move the action items one through 14 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception.
We've got a supplemental item, it's one through 15, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Move the action items one through 15 be approved as recommended in this agenda with the exception of five.
So moved.
Support.
We have a motion by trustee Barry, support by trustee McDonald. Trustee Watts, you had a question on action item number three?
Yes, and it's connected to one of the donations from the Dearborn Ed Foundation. There was a question, let's see, let me go back up to number three. So number three is in order for classroom supplies. Is there a differentiation between classroom supplies ordered through the district versus classroom supplies through the Dearborn Ed Foundation?
The foundation grant gets added to their unit budget to spend over the remaining that year and the following year. So basically about a year and a half worth of time to spend it. And the unit budget carries over from year to year. What we do on blankets, that every time here in August, we bring to the board a variety of blankets. And a blanket purchase order is when you actually give supplies or a budget dollar value for the school to use for one particular place. So it doesn't matter if it's a thousand dollars or, you know, for example, gas, it could be like $300,000 for a blanket purchase or to be able to purchase from this one vendor. So they estimate that in August. So as this clear progresses, they might get an education foundation grant. Or the vendors that they're using may not have it in stock, which everyone is kind of realizing in their personal lives. So they have to go back to a vendor that does have it. So their estimate at the beginning of year for 15,000 wasn't enough. And by board policy, they have to come back to the board to amend it, since it's gonna be over that threshold. So that's why you're seeing it here, that they have to go to this one particular vendor that they normally only spend about 15,000 with, either because of the education foundation or shortage, they have to go back to that same vendor for additional amount. Hence why you see it on the board agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. Any additional discussion before we call the question on this part? All right, if we could please get a roll call, trustee Moszep.
Sure. Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes. You can please move to the.
To number five?
Let's go to number five. And please read the recommended action.
The recommended, sure. Move that the Board of Education approve a contract on behalf of Divine Child High School to Harriet Speaks LLC, not to exceed $30,000.
So we'll have Dr. Chokel and Mr. Wall explain.
Before we discuss it, we need to have a motion.
We'll have to move it.
I'll make, I'll make, I'm sorry, trustee Moszep, did you just say you'll move it?
I'll second it.
Yes.
And supported by trustee Petlicov. And now we'll have Mr. Wall come in for discussion.
Good evening, President Thorpe and trustees again. As part of the grant funding system through the state of Michigan, is anytime that we receive grant money, we are required to do certain things through the grant process. So on the title grants, which is Title I, Title II, and those type of grants, if we accept any grant fund from the state, we also have to see the grant process for any non-publics in our area. So that's been a standard practice from the state for 35 years that I've been in the business. That if we take Title II money, which this is the case on this one, we have a budget allocation of a certain percentage we have to allocate to each of the individual nonprofits in our area that participate in the state process. So normally that money is a very small amount because it's just a percentage or so based on the student population and they get an allocation. So normally we don't see this kind of issue come to the board. However, with the pandemic, a lot of the title funds have not been spent in previous years because either they were not in session, or they couldn't get a speaker to come, or they couldn't have public gatherings. So a lot of the carryover funds from the last two years are now available now, so they begin at much larger numbers. And so that's the state funding process. So we oversee that, they come through our system, we're the fiduciary oversight for them. We don't make the decision for them, but we make sure it's eligible for that grant purpose. Now, with the larger dollar values, another law comes into place that anything over the, this year, $26,000 and change have to have board approval. So two different laws are now coming to crisscross that normally don't do it. Because normally their allocations aren't large enough to require board approval. So now in this case, we had that same discussion at our administrative level. We contacted the state and the state says, our rules are different than what you have to follow for procurement. So we made a decision that if we have to take anything over that $26,000 threshold to the board, hence why we're here, asking board approval for something that we have to oversee, but we don't decide how they spend their money. And my Title II expert here could talk more about the grant.
So Title II is dedicated toward teacher professional development and leadership development. And so that, I think you've got some documentation about the funding sources for Title II. The non-public schools meet with our district in March. And along with the Title I and compensatory education office, Ms. Rose Aldubaili, we meet with each principal of a non-public school. We let them know the funds that we, that we disperse at the direction of the state to them, and they submit a plan. So as Mr. Wall said, we are not to tell them how to spend the funds, but we do have them abide by the same guidelines that we as a district have to abide by. So they submit a plan for professional development. And in this case, they plan to spend a large portion of their funds on one vendor. And the amount for that vendor obviously exceeds our threshold, which is why it's coming to the board. So this is a year-long series of professional learning for their entire staff. And so the description of the services are included in the board action items. So the service does fall within the parameters of allowable expenditures for the grant. And so that's why it is here for you to approve.
Trustee Barry.
Mr. Wall, just to clarify, there are other schools that we are responsible for, but they don't meet the threshold.
Right, their processes are not requiring board approval to, to actually approve them at this level.
I just wanted to get that out there, thank you.
Trustee Moszep.
Yeah, so from my understanding, we're just the carriers here. The state gives us the money and we disperse it to the non-public schools. Correct?
Correct, we, it's a fiduciary responsibility through the grant, yes.
So my, my other question is not related to the agenda item, however, it's kind of related. Did our schools also apply for this grant? Seems like, sounds very interesting and I would say our schools would highly benefit from it.
The Title II grants have been part of the consolidated application since 1965. And so we have been benefiting from the grant funds, Title II in particular, but also all the title funds for many, many years. And so we spend this money on staff who provide professional development. They fund many of our instructional coaches and the curriculum committees that plan professional learning, K-12, math, science, social studies, English, language arts. When we pay, when they plan professional development, we use these funds to pay teachers a stipend for attending the training. And in years past, that's been after-school Saturdays and during the summer. So there is an entire planning process that we go through in order to determine where these funds go. And like Title I, there's an initial allocation. And then there are carryover funds that are added. And Mr. Wall mentioned that all of the carryover funds from last year, because of the pandemic, added to that total amount to be expended, hence in this case, that larger expenditure.
So to recap, it's not uncommon for the other schools to come to us asking for a portion of the Title II funds. What is uncommon is that this one happens to be over the threshold. And that's why as board members and the public would, this would be one of the times we would really see it. Any?
Correct.
All right, thanks. Any additional discussion on this before we vote? All right, trustee Moszep, if we could please have a roll call?
Or trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Deambrazio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Moszep, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thorpe?
Yes, motion carries. Trustee Moszep, could you please do the recap?
For the?
The summary.
Summary, correct, yeah, yeah, sure. Number one, approval warrants. Number two, approval of award to Equipment Distributors, Inc. Number three, approval of award changed to school specialties. Number four, approval of award to Eduinity, Inc. Number five, approval of award to Harriet Speaks LLC. Number six, approval of award to Procedo Holdings, Inc. and Delta Image LLC. Number seven, approval of award to Helen Bus Company. Number eight to 11, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P to 12. Number 12, approval of financial statement. Number 13, approval of policy updates, changes per board report 21 dash 47. Number 14, approval of donations. And number 15, was it HR?
I'll jump in here, President Thorpe wanted me to, trustee Moszep, appointment of assistant principal at Smith Middle School. And I wanted to call up Mr. Weger, who was just approved, he has Dearborn roots. I will say, this is the competitive market. We have our Grow Your Own program with our intern, but we're also glad when we get high-quality individuals that come from outside the district. He applied through one of our other openings. And in this competitive market, we knew that it was someone we wanted in the district. And so we were able to work it out to bring him into Smith with some of the transition. And so if we can congratulate him now, I'd appreciate that. And I asked him, we've been in communication, and you know, he wanted to come tonight. So I said, it could be long, we're not sure, but he's here, he's been watching the meeting. So, Michael, graduation, I'll let you say a few comments.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody. And first of all, I'm glad I did. There were so many great things that are going on here, from the Blue Ribbon presentations to, you know, hearing from community members, staff members about the great things that are going on in schools throughout Dearborn. So it was a great experience to be here, even, even though it might run long, it might be a long evening. I'm totally fine with it because there are good things going on. I want to thank the Dearborn Public Schools Administration and the Board of Education for having the confidence in my abilities and my experience by giving me this opportunity to be a building administrator here in Dearborn. I am excited to be coming home to the community that I was raised in. Coming home to the community that instilled in me the values and the integrity that I have used throughout my 20 years in education. I am a proud product of Whitmore Bowles Elementary School, Stout Middle School, and Etzel Ford High School. And I look forward to having the opportunity to give back to the students of Dearborn, to have a positive impact in their lives, and to always put those students first. Thank you, I really and truly appreciate this opportunity.
Trustee Barry.
Mr. Weger, congratulations. But you're gonna realize real fast, this is not a long meeting.
We wish you the best in the new position and welcome to Dearborn Public Schools.
Absolutely.
Next item. Next item.
Next item is discussion item, thirty-minute li- time limit. Hiring process and board approval, Dr. Glenn Maleko and President Thorpe.
I'll go ahead and get us kicked off on this one. We've talked several times about employee retention, but there's also employee recruitment. And what I have asked both Dr. Maleko and we'll talk next week at the college level with, with, uh, President Cavalluna, is the process that we use as a board to bring on new hires. In short, do we need to look at being a little bit more agile when they have a, a candidate that they think is a good fit? Do we make them wait until the next board meeting to bring that person on? And I don't think we can really have this full conversation in thirty minutes. But I did at least wanna let the whole board know where's our current stance on this, so we can start discussing what we think would be appropriate to give, uh, maybe a delegation, uh, and some of it is already there, uh, to our, uh, direct reports to go ahead and make the decisions that they think are in the best interest prior to a next board meeting. So, Dr. Maleko, if you wanna go ahead with, with, uh, what we've done and what our policy-
So there, Joanne put in the folder, um, your board folder, the current policies. And generally, it does say that, you know, that the board has to appoint. Now, our process has been, because we want teachers in the classroom, that the board has always, uh, given the ability for it to be retroactive when it goes to the board. Now, the paraprofessionals is another area, a few years ago, where you also, um, it was recommendations because of the shortages that we had. And secondly, we wanted to get them in the classroom as soon as we could, especially in the special ed area, which is where most of our paraprofessionals are. Um, so it's, you know, retroactive. Uh, we talk about transportation and other things that we don't. Those are the only two that we do it. And then we generally would wait until the next, um, you know, meeting, um, each month, uh, in order to start other individuals. So, uh, President Thorpe contacted me, um, talked to me about this, given, you know, the competitive market. Our team would definitely be, um, open to that, because I do get requests a lot, and you know, we have to wait, you know, we have a process, and it's there for a reason. Um, one of the things I can assure, and I think the board's aware, that we've really tightened the process over many years since, uh, Brian Wiston was superintendent and I was in HR, and the board wanted to see that. We've brought in a lot of protocols. The board has actually, um, made some changes to the, the policy as well a few years back. Trustee Barry, you had requested some things just on, um, you know, hiring relatives and other things, and there were other trustees several years ago that we um, included a policy to make sure. Uh, there are multiple, um, Mr. Wegger, who was hired tonight. He knew, and I told him, we're gonna be making a lot of calls, um, you know, to your references, so it's, you know, we do the criminal checks. We do the background of what we call the unprofessional conduct by law. But we also make multiple calls to make sure that these are candidates that, um, we want in the district when they're outside candidates. Um, look at references. So, we, administration would welcome that ability, um, to have some flexibility. Um, and I appreciate, President Thorpe actually brought this to me as an, an idea and wanted to bring it up. Uh, but generally, we've checked with our attorney as well, and there's no state requirement as far as this. It's more about what we do and our processes that we've followed going back many years. It does say that the board approves the hiring.
I was gonna say, there is a state requirement in the constitution that we have to approve.
You do have to approve it, and it's in the, the policy, but there's no specifics about the timeline or the dates or anything like that, which is why you've been able to do some of it, you know, retroactive when, you know, it's August and you're trying to get teachers in the classroom, so. That's, you know, our attorney said, you know, it's really more of what we wanna do in our protocols.
And this fits to something that I brought up back in January about procedures. Policies and procedures are completely different things. We've got policies in place, but our procedure has normally been that until we have a next board meeting, that's when we will do the hiring. Knowing that we don't wanna have classrooms empty when we start a school year. Um, but now we're to a position where every, every single, uh, employee is critical. And I can tell you personally, I don't wanna have them have to wait a couple of weeks to get a person in place.
Chances are, they won't.
Because you, there's usually somebody else seeking that same person. Trustee Patlitschkov?
I do have one question. I, i- if this is a timing issue that we're talking about, that, that we would approve it retroactively and you would already have hired them. What if just on the off chance, and I know having been on the board for many years, a name or two would come across that one of us would know and have some information about that, we would not want to vote yes on for one reason or another. And you've already hired this person and you're putting it before us after the fact. What happens then?
Well, one of the things that I would recommend that we do in order to avoid that is that we would get this information in our board communications. So, y- you know, you get those weekly.
So we can alert you prior-
You would have that in the board briefs, and we, we tend to be very detailed in the HR. Um, or we could do something else that's more convenient for you. Um, I would, I would just say that what, um, happens, so it's also getting the person, but like a transportation. Then you wanna get them in the bus and you're able to hire someone, and so there's a, there's usually several weeks then that you have to wait, because the individual employee will wait until they're official to, if they have another job, to give that official notice as well, right? So, everything, there's a timing of it, um, you know-
Which means this wouldn't be, take effect anyhow, because the next board meeting might roll around by that-
Yeah, and if it-
Point anyhow.
It might fall into that, but if it was like, let's say, this week, we had some people, like we had some transportation drivers, um, that would, or bus drivers, then we would have to wait until the next board meeting, and then they would have to give their notice if they worked in another, um, you know, whereas they could give their notice, as long as we did all the legal checks that we're required to do by state law, um, we could also do it. I guess since you're bringing that up, I mean, one thing could be too, that we make sure it's in there for a week, or we can do another section or something. We could figure something out that way to make sure-
I'm just bringing it up because I know it, it, it has, it's been very long since anybody's challenged somebody, but, uh, we had a period of time where there was a couple people that, um, board members did challenge.
So, those are-
I would-
Trustee Watts?
I would say instead of putting it in the weekly board briefs, make it a separate report, because there are some times where I do the board briefs in, in segments. So I would say have it its own, because at that point, it's an, if time is of the essence, and I think we would all be aware of that.
Yeah.
And then we would be mindful of that.
Agreed.
Another thought that came to me when you were talking, trustee Patlitschkov, is Dr. Malek always makes sure that we know these are the positions we're looking for, and, and these are, give us a heads up that it's coming, so to speak. We know some of these, uh, unfortunately, are probably gonna be there over and over and over again. But give us an idea of where we're standing on things, so nothing, we don't feel like anything's being sprung on us.
Sure. Well, I think you guys see, um, you know, that's how I do with my administrative. I, I make sure you guys are getting that information the whole way through, so you know exactly what's-
Yeah.
There's no surprises, cause you know I've been communicating, you know, and, and I usually do it in the briefs and in email when I make the final recommendation. But along the way, you get those memos that come, so it brings, it's a separate that brings your attention to the fact that these are important hires. And, and, you know, individuals would reach out to me if there's a concern with the resume.
Additional, trustee Mosip?
Yeah, I, I would like just to comment that, you know, to Dr. Maleko, if he needs us, I mean, I know it's a crazy market, as, as it was mentioned, not only in education, but in all different, um, segments and all different markets right now. And, uh, time of the essence is always, people negotiate quickly and they move quickly. So, i- if there is a need, obviously, there is still the, the other board meeting that we have for the college, that also can be an option to expedite the approval. Or, you know, if there is a necessity to call for a special meeting to approve some hires if they're needed, especially during the beginning of the school. I know we have done that for the college. So, that's also an option, just to kind of solve the timing issue.
And that is one of the reasons why our August meetings have flip-flopped. And we do the college meeting, uh, where we usually do the P-12 meeting. And we still have the July meeting too.
In the July, you do it as well to give us flexibility, because the, remember, we have two meetings in June, and then the July would come like right away. And it doesn't give us time to get our hiring pro- so it gives us the month of July to work, then send recommendations to you at the end. You have agreed to flip that one as well. We moved that, we changed the July meeting to the last, or to the fourth week about five years ago for that very purpose.
Well, you bring up good points, trustee Mosip. The one thing I would say with the special meetings is, if it's for a lot of hires, I don't think this board would have a, a hard time with it. But I don't know that we'd wanna be calling special meetings for, for single hires here or there either.
Do we wanna put some kind of parameters in this policy? Um, oh, about what would constitute an emergency hire that would be retroactive? Or are we just gonna say, hey, you know?
Well, the other thing is, is this going into a policy? Or is this gonna be a separate just procedure guideline that we would work on separately? I would defer back to maybe the policy committee to see what, what they would think. Work with Dr. Malek, go work with our legal counsel to see if they feel this is something that, that should be. Trustee, uh, Barry?
What are you thinking? What would be the exception?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Do we have to have a conversation about- I mean, i- is this gonna become the norm? Every hire is, you know, we're gonna have, you know, twenty people being retroactive, or just two because it's an emergency situation? You see what I'm saying?
Thinking this through, probably nine-
Are we changing the whole thing?
Probably ninety percent of the hires will go proper channels, show up at our agenda, and we're good. Uh, the other ten percent would probably, you know, I kinda agree with, uh, trustee Watts here, just, it's a special email report that you sent us.
But that would be a parameter then, is that-
Yeah, it'd be, you know,
You know.
These are the people we'll be hiring pending board approval at the next board meeting.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Are we changing the whole policy, just saying, you know, whenever you want, you know, it's all gonna be retroactive, or, you know, it, it, cause it could kinda slide that way, if, you know, you think every hire is-
We can look at the policy, uh, David, maybe we can look at the policy at the next meeting, just to kinda see where it's going and, you know, we'll bring you a recommendation then.
And really, we'd be, the classifications we're talking about are like more in the non-instructional, because you already do it for the teachers, it's already set for the teachers.
Yeah.
And you don't have it written as a policy about the teachers. It's, it's a practice that's been implemented that, prior to me-
That's what I'm just saying. I wanna, I, I just wanna make sure we're all clear that we're-
That you're comfortable, whatever the board's-
Working under.
Now, while we would take this through the policy committee, what I would say is that let's try to move a little bit quicker, just through like a procedure-
Yeah.
Type of idea.
Doesn't have to be a full-
Cause the policy, we all know it takes two months, and the whole idea behind this is to move quicker.
Well, that thought, maybe it doesn't have to be two months.
Yeah, that, that's part of the policy.
I know.
We've got a policy on policies.
Yeah, we got a policy on policies, yeah.
All right, any additional discussion on this item? Thank you very much for your time today. I mentioned that we will be having a discussion like this for the college next week at its, uh, uh, regular scheduled board meeting.